All right. We'll call the November 21th Wycomico County Council work session to order. I'd still like to stand if we couldn't do the Lord's Prayer and Pledge Allegiance. Thank you.
Father, O'er in heaven, I will be the one who will bring you down, and I will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our deliverance, and forgive us all our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, from lying, from evil, and power of your own. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The item on the agenda today, of course, is to review the fire service agreement study, I guess that's been done. We have with us today Mr. Cohen, I believe, Dr. Cohen. Mr. Strasburg, did you have any comments this morning?
Yes, just briefly. We put together a work-study group some months back when we hired Tri-Data. That work-study group was comprised of the President of the Chiefs Association, Marty Skarsen, Chief Hoppus, and his deputy, Tom Stevenson, Julia Glanz, myself, and David Shipley. That group has met various times, depending on the subject matter, and has interfaced with Dr. Cohen. Most of the interface has been from the people who I would call the technical experts, our fire chiefs, our EMS director. And with the data and the discourse over those months, Dr. Cohen has put together a draft report. The work group met about an hour ago. We reviewed the draft report, asked the questions that we had. The recommendations that you'll see at the end of the report are recommendations that the work-study group, at this point in time, support, but we know that there are a lot of questions. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done for the elected leaders from both the city and the county to agree upon our next steps and what changes we may or may not make with regard to the financial arrangements. But with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cohen to walk through the report. I'm sure he'll have a lot of questions, as we did, and he's here at your convenience. He will be meeting later, today, 4:30, with the City Council in the same format. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strasburg. Good morning. How are you?
Good afternoon. How are you, sir?
Good afternoon, yeah.
Very good.
I'd like to recognize from the City Council, we have, of course, Mayor Jake Day, President Jack Heath, and Vice President Miraboda. Glad to have y'all here today, as well as Chief Hoppus. Glad to have you here.
Very good.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, and I want to thank the Council for allowing me to make this presentation to you. It was a challenge for everybody because it explored some things that really haven't been explored before, but also recreated some underlying things that have been here for a while. As I said at the work group meeting, and I'm going to repeat at the city meeting, I want everybody on the Council to know that I know how emotional this is, and I have to commend everybody who participated. We know there are people who may have agreed with what we were trying to do, or disagree vehemently, et cetera, but everybody, regardless of their opinions, remained professional and were helpful along the way, regardless of what may be totally against what they believe in, and that's all we can, as consultants, we could ever ask of anybody to do, and we thought, Council President, that that should be noted on the record.
All right. Thank you.
And that the Council be aware of this. Basically, what we had here was our scope of service, and it was coming up with a, trying to come up at first with an answer for these additional services that are provided by the city that are not within the city, which are on that outside, whether you want to call it the donut hole, or the penumbra, or whatever term that you'd like to use, outside the city, but closest to the city's services. We also had to look inward with that to say, what's the history behind all of this? And as you all know, the history is much greater than the technical problem here that we were charged with solving. Regardless of what you find, regardless of what you do with the report, et cetera, I think it would be universally told to you by any consultant that you hired to do this that the most critical issue is the access to data and having a centralized data source within public safety throughout the county that can be recognized by the county, the fire chiefs, the city, the city chief, et cetera, and having a centralized data source that you call your authentic official data. Because there's all kind of databases popping around with all kind of information, but the bottom line's going to be, is it authentic? Is it telling you what you need to know? And that one place is at the county seat. Whether it's the information about calls, numbers of calls, types of calls, response times, but also anything involving the ability to do predictive analysis of all that data needs to reside in one place. It needs to be accessible by those who are authorized to do so from outside the organization, but it needs to be there in one place where everybody can say, this is our official data. This is what we like. Centralized data is what we call an Alpha to Omega resource, and it also allows you to use whatever standards that you want to determine efficacy within your response organizations. I put a couple of them up there. I know NFPA, all the NFPA standards, they're very nice standards, but with the full understanding that if you look at whether it's NFPA 1710, which is more toward career services, NFPA 1720, volunteer, but we could probably count on our hands the number of fire departments and EMS services that actually meet that standard. It's a high pinnacle, but it's one of the things that's out there now. One of the biggest problems is it's difficult right now to determine dispatch intervals, to do really good measurement. And eventually, because the technology is here, when it's deemed appropriate, the CAD system, the 911 Communication Center, should be able to automatically populate reports and everything, so everybody's looking at the same data without having to go back a year or two later and hire somebody like me to try to find it and do it. It really, it should be real time. It's going to take a while to get there, but it's a direction in which we can go. Just for the designation of areas, you'll hear me use the terms urban, suburban, and rural. It might not be the terms that this Council has assigned to those areas, but basically, when we talk about urban response, it's the city of Salisbury, suburban responses being those of companies that are surrounding the city, as you see there, and rural being everybody else here. When we analyze things, not all the times we needed were available, and we know from nationwide that any time you resort to mechanical, manual entrance of times on reports, it become, the error rate is much higher because sometimes dispatchers have other emergency needs that they have to take care of. These are what we call our response times, basically from the time the call is entered until the time the first unit is on the scene. These look a little high, and they are, but please note the following. We don't use means, averages, we use 90th percentiles. If it's my job on the line, or perhaps an election that's on the line, I'm more comfortable talking about 90th percentiles because I'll be able to tell most of the people, or more of the people, what the expectations are, where averages are just that here. The other thing we can't tell is exactly when, which times a day are better than others because of the data issues. For example, with Salisbury, we know that the city, after a certain time period, it switches from, a couple of stations switch from career to primary volunteer. We can't tell you about the efficiencies of that because the data just isn't yet available. If we break things down further, we can tell you what the 90th percent by zone is for each of the stations, at least in the urban and suburban areas. What we're talking about here is what we are going to call automatic aid, when the city automatically will be dispatched onto those calls into the county, into that, what Wayne calls the donut hole. Any other thing where a unit is specifically requested for faraway responses, we call mutual aid. Obviously, automatic aid calls are increasing from city to county. Mutual aid calls, the specific calls for distance responses, are increasing from county to city, but are also basically a wash. There's no real difference that we can tell in that. It's what we like to call mutual aid. It really is mutual, it's not one-sided here. What we tried to do is come up with some projection models for where are you going into the future here? There are a couple of problems. One of the years showed a decrease in calls that I don't believe happened, and the, all this data came from the 911 center. So we took the first step in saying this is the authentic data that should be used. And in here, you'll read some projection models, high and low. We use two different models to do this, two mathematical models, one being more of a flat, or a curved model, and the other being more of a vertical, or more of a vertical model, to come up with what we predict are highs and lows for the next few years. And generally, with Salisbury, the city of Salisbury, we see a slight uptick in those EMS responses, and we do also know that they will probably need an additional EMS unit in the near future. If you look at the highs and lows in suburban areas, they are basically a wash. We do have one question, though, specifically about Hebron. None of us are really comfortable with those numbers, and again, it may just be a mathematical issue here, and that will have to be looked in. And in the rural areas, you'll see that there's a wider swing in our predictions, and that's very logical, because one or two call difference is much bigger in Westside or in Allen than it is in Salisbury. So we have a wider model, but generally, we're looking at what we believe is somewhat of a steady situation here that we predict. Fire calls, it's much easier, and the other thing to remember with fire calls, it may not be necessarily fire. Many of these, what we call fire calls, are actually fire apparatus assisting ambulance services, whether they're either first response because they're closer, or they're needed because of rescue patient terrain, or a degree of acuity of patient illness. So when we talk about the increases in calls, it may not tell you, I don't believe Salisbury, if you see the increases, that's because there's more fires in the city. I just, there's no evidence to believe that, but more all-hazard responses occurring from our stations. This has presented the big financial issue that is here today, is all of the calls that the city is providing into the county, is there a fair method for reimbursement? And if so, what is that? How will it be administered? Those types of things. We did the best we could with being provided these things. We recommend that the cost-per-call allocation be the best, at least to start. If we, some will tell you, well, let's look at taxes and things like that. That's more of a longer-term and heavier political process than, we got it. The best way for the citizens and our government leadership to understand this thing can work is to come up with a model that actually shows success and can be put on the road, but not being careless, combining stewardship with the combination of good patient care and good fire and rescue services to our citizens. The other thing is, how much does each call cost? Obviously, if it's a career service that's providing it, it's going to cost more money because not 85, 90% of your career budget is human resource costs, and that's why the fire service has been so fortunate to have its volunteer contingent for so many years, and still having that. However, challenges are increasing and things are changing, which I think this Council is well aware of. The other issue is in some of the more rural fire departments, the cost per call is higher because if you have less calls, but some of your fixed costs are the same. For example, gasoline costs the same thing. The fire engine that the city paid for, the rural areas pay the same price, even though they run to less calls. So we have to be very careful in how we interpret any of this. And you see there what we've kind of come up with in some of these costs. Again, the cost per call for EMS and fire, if you take into consideration the areas that have high-volume career representation will be a little higher than in the suburban area, which is using combination career, volunteer, more part-timers than before, and also the rural areas will be more per call because they run fewer calls. The cost per call fire-wise, same thing. Again, rural-wise, if you take all the money that is being, all the costs and all the money being reimbursed, we showed a slight deficit, again, before any drastic actions are taken, understanding that we're, some of the data accuracy may not be where you wanted it to be. The next step we had to do is figure out, okay, what is the true deficit of what the city is providing that they're not being reimbursed through some mechanism? And by looking at all of this and putting it together, we've come up with about $193 per call. That's a very general estimate because we just had very general numbers. Eventually, if the Council and the City Council and the fire service wants to adopt this type of thing, a more precise calculation will be done because the billing agents can get involved and give you a more precise figure. I think I'm pretty close here when it comes to this. Basically, for this, or anything to work, any reimbursement model, even the one that's not, one that's not here, it's going to reach, need consensus between the county and the city, because that's going to be the easiest way to do it, and when both governments can buy into the consensus model, it will signal the fire and EMS service leadership that that's what's expected from them. And I want to, I want to just invite the Council's attention to the fact that I was very straightforward with everybody on this. Whether it's part of the scope of work or not, it's easy to see that the leadership of both government organizations is looking not only for any of you, for a solution, but to come up with the mere fact that the leadership is able to make decisions, reach consensus, and for the future, the county or the city not have to take any drastic action in changing leadership profiles. And I took the liberty of coming forward and telling everybody that, that not only is the technical part of this being looked at, but the adaptive part, when it comes to leadership and change, is also being looked at by the elected officials to look into the future here. We figured out that the city is spending between the figures you see here, a lot of it depends on whether the person's transported or not, whether you even find a patient. One of the things that's not in the preliminary report, which will be in the final, is whatever model you choose, one of the ones we talked about here, or one of the ones that you come up with, your legal departments need to talk with the Center for Medicaid or Medicare Services to make sure they don't violate an anti-kickback provision. I did some of the investigation. Unfortunately, I can't ask for you, I do not have standing to do that. If you want an advisory opinion, they won't give you an official one. If you want an advisory one, it has to come from the government, the agencies, or their legal representatives, and I'm just advising everybody of that. Your legal people may look at it and say, no, we're comfortable. I had to put that in there. Three basic models that we suggested, and if you look at these from a business perspective, they're basically risk models. How much risk does anybody want to take here? The simplest of models is $193 payment per call. Now, it gets complicated where, in most cases, non-transports or no patient don't get anything. So what should the county do based on the city? However, the city does extend resources, anybody expands resources when they have to go through the, going to either find a patient or treat them after they find them, even if they're not taken to a hospital. This is starting to change nationwide, but still has a long way to go before this occurs. In the first model, the county would pay the stipend, the city would retain control of the finances, meaning they would be responsible, in whichever way they wish to, to go after those collection the best way they could. On the opposite end is what we call the deep discount model, and that's a model where the county and the city would come up to an agreement. I just use the number 220 because that's, I'm familiar with this going on in Florida, in Pinellas County, and it could be any number that's decided upon. What this does is the county pays the city, the city says, thank you, we're not worried about it anymore, and the county would retain or get control of the billing. So the county would try to get as much as they can, and there's a yield there. This reduces the risk for the city. Now, the third model, somewhere in between that, with the county paying a minimal fee to the city, but the city basically taking all of the risk again and pursuing collections. The $302,650 is, as you see here, is in addition to what they would normally collect. There are many offshoots of many models, folks, and even if you buy into the concept, I'm sure your leadership will recommend to you a variation on the theme here, and that's fine. This is just the straw man. Fire service is a little bit more obvious, and it's just a, there's an unreimbursed gap of 288.95, and that's what would be given, and the city would be running the assignment that's needed to do the job here. It's a much easier way to, but with fire, it's really not as complicated. What I like to do is go over the 10 recommendations we came up with, because that really lays down a lot of how we handle this technical information. The first one, and the most important one out of all of this, is accurate record-keeping, data storage, data manipulation, and predictive analysis type of things, and it needs to be a priority for the county to do this for the 911 center. We understand that it's expensive. We're not kidding anybody here. However, the returns that it will give you when it comes to having the available data will really help with some of the relational issues that are here, and because a lot of them, as you know, are because of not being sure and having to trust, but as President Reagan would have said, trust but verify, the verify part's a little hard here right now. So that's something that could be worked on. The third recommendation has to do with the amount of money that's provided to the volunteer companies by the county, and at this point, that fixed, there should be at least partially a fixed amount continue to be provided. Again, the county units, even if they run fewer calls, are paying the same amount for fire engines, truck companies, medic units, and for maintenance agreements for everything. So just to do it on a per-chance basis is not, probably not the best way to go at this point. We can't recommend it. Accuracy of information is paramount, also financially. We did the best we could. I think we're in range, but the county fire chiefs need to work with the Director of Finance, who I've had extensive discussion with here, into looking for more accurate and meaningful financial information. It's not a question of whether people are being honest or not. We, I can't even get that far. I think they are, just personally, but there's not enough to tell me everything, to really take a look and get really precise with this. The next recommendation is looking at some of the other options. We do not believe that new volunteer fire companies or stations near Salisbury will help solve your problem, because as we all know, you don't have to be in the fire service to know, and we've seen publications even since we've started just on Wycomico County concerning the challenges of the volunteer fire service and some direction that needs to be taken in the future. Opening up more probably is not within goodness here, especially when the city does have units that are close, and looking at what's best for the patient. It's a long haul, it's got a lot of history to it, but the lines need to blur. The lines need to blur. We can no longer accept for our citizens the fact that, the silo mentality, that for all the reasons that it happened, and there are probably a lot of good ones, but for all those reasons, in the future, career or volunteer just won't really get you any farther. And I don't think this technical fix and this one little problem, if the bigger picture isn't looked at- isn't looked at in some way, shape, or form. And we've gone over the rest, a couple of these recommendations here. One of the things that we believe would help you out is whoever is picked to come up with finalizing these agreements, using a third party that everybody's comfortable with, we'd be happy to do it. That's part of what I do for a living. But if, get the people who everybody's comfortable with to serve as the intermediaries, not to make decisions, but to help both our county service and our city services achieve consensus. And that's another issue. Probably the second, after the data issues, it's the numbers, the amount of money, et cetera, is the least of the issues. The ability for our public safety professionals and volunteers to reach consensus is eventually what this is all going to come back to. And we just can't ignore it anymore. I don't, I think it would be a mistake to do that. And again, the other recommendation is a comprehensive study of fire and EMS services, both in the city and for the county, to see exactly where things are going. It doesn't have to be tomorrow, it can be, it can add certain things, but I think it would be of assistance to you. So the bottom line is, here, what we recommend is basically some type of reimbursement for the city for those calls provided. It will be economically the best thing to do, it'll really continue to enhance the ability to have good patient care, it'll be fair, and it will start to foster working relationships, which are becoming ever so important in the collaborative processes that we all are, are needing to come down to. And so that's basically our report. And again, we thank you for doing that, for allowing us to do that. It's just so important for people to exercise leadership and for the elected officials to have that expectation of its public safety officials. That's going to be the first, the first real thing to get the message across. And I've been very clear with everybody I've talked to on this. Aggressive action in the monitor, modernization of the 911 center, and achieving consensus on standards. The more consensus you achieve on, on all of the standards, the more accurate your reimbursement models can be, that you're getting exactly what you pay for. And we mentioned the closest unit response issues. Please, I, I ask you, use this as a guide for the future. It's only a couple of things, but I really think it's going to be looking at what's ahead. And it develops a baseline. Continue to create that sense of urgency, and it'll get you to develop some long-term strategies that whether career or volunteer, county or city, will be necessary for the future. That's who I am, and please feel free to get in touch with me if I can do anything further. The plan right now is, after making the presentations, answering questions, the final report will be done and will be transmitted to those who we are contractually advised to transmit this to for distribution. I thank you for your time. And can I, through the chair, is, would now be okay to answer questions at your discretion?
Yes, thank you. Councilman.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir, please.
You, you keep mentioning the importance of data, and I think it's on page 38 of this August 16 draft. Basically says that you don't have, I'll find it here, excuse me a minute. City of Salisbury provided a copy of its audited 2015 budget report, but it does not have the needed detail. We were advised that further details were not available. I guess at some point in time, when you're doing a study like this, don't you need all the information? And let me finish up. Were you instructed to do this report without, without the full details?
Well, I, I think it's, we should more correctly say that really none of the companies had the, the level of detail that was necessary to do this, not just one or the other. And that's why we believe it's so important that the, the fire chiefs get together with the county finance director, the city finance manager, so they can assist on what data is necessary, what financial data is necessary to, to be accurate. The more accurate the data, the more accurate the reimbursement models and the predictive analysis can be. Councilman, I, I have to tell you that this area is by far not the worst that I've seen over the years. It could be, it could be better, but more of, when, based on the data we have, more of the forecasts become more pro forma than actually something I would spend my life, I would risk my life or other people's lives on.
But I mean, at some point in time during this study, did you question, can we do a proper analysis of this without the data that we need?
Yes. And the decision was, that was agreed to by many was, we've got to go with what we have.
I got one other one. You emphasize a lot in here about data and how expensive it is, and that it needs to be done through our 911 system. But in this whole report, you put no value on our 911 system that the county funds and pays for fully, it's on understanding, through the operators. Everything in this whole works has a value, but you have put no value on the 911 system. And how does that, why wasn't that done?
And thank you, Councilman. And yes, if this was a comprehensive study, we would absolutely have done that. But if, in reviewing the scope of work, that wasn't part of what we were asked to do at this point.
So are you saying if we did a comprehensive study and figured the value of our 911 system in, that these figures you've given us today would drastically change?
No, I don't believe so. I, I believe what you, what you do with that value would be there. For example, there are, I don't want to give anybody misleading ideas, and this is only by example, not a recommendation. There are some counties who run a 911 system, and they charge various entities for their service, even private, especially private ambulance services. They'll do the dispatch, and they have to have that data because they have to charge them for that service. Nobody mentioned or started talking about that here, so having the value of it would just be to know what that value is. What I am very comfortable saying is, it is a piece that is most valuable because without step one, regardless of how much it costs or how expensive it is, if step one isn't there, I can guarantee you the next few steps down the road will not be accurate.
I still, I'm still not comprehending why you didn't include our nine, the value of our 911 system.
It was not in the scope of work.
So not being in the scope of work doesn't really give us a true figure on what we're trying to decide here, right?
Well, it gives you a true figure when it comes to provision of care. It could be said that, knowing the value of the 911 system and what you're expending could be, could change some of those figures. And I can be honest, because I get to go home after this, if, if the county wanted to, or does charge the city for dispatch services, et cetera, or tries to judge how much they should charge, yes, that, that could be figured out.
That's not what I'm implying.
Okay. No, no, I'm, I'm, that's my only example I can figure out here.
Evening out the values of the services that are, that are being provided, the county is providing services to the city. And that, that wasn't figured into this, that wasn't mentioned at all into this study. That's where I'm coming from. The only thing that's mentioned really is that the county, the city is providing services to the county. And of course, you had the back, you know, where the Kicks County does come in the city, but you put no value on what the county is doing for the city as far as, as far as 911 services. That, that was my point. Thank you.
Well, taken. Thank you.
I'd just like to follow up on what Mr. Holloway said. It's interesting, Dr. Cohen, but almost every page of this, these recommendations and this report that you go through, we hear margin of error, decreased calls, EMS high-low, financial challenge, data accuracy, inaccurate data accuracy, on, almost on every page, which makes it very hard. And you say numerous times that there's a 10% margin of error. And, correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't think we said 10%, but you have, yes, you're correct, sir.
10%, basically. But again, you don't have all the information that you need to make an accurate report. And it's very unfortunate, but I think that in the long run, we'll find that the, the areas that get the most attention will be the city, and the rural areas and the suburban areas are the ones that'll get the least attention because they tend to be more in the margin of error range. I think.
Well, I think what you see here is the, the generation of business. The generation of volume is in that area. At this point, the rural areas, the city doesn't serve the rural areas at all. And the rural areas, because of where they are, lower number of calls, are self-contained. That's, that's why, a couple of things. First, we made it so important that the 911 center upgrade be the crux of anything that you do because of exactly, sir, what you pointed out, to the, precisely. And the second part of it is the recommendation that the, you continue the fixed reimbursement because of exactly what you said, is if you just do it by call, the rural areas tend to get ignored and fall into, and, and honestly, one of the, the things that we see and the problems we, we put out years ago, when you didn't have as many calls, not as many training requirements, people could fight the fires and do all the fundraising, it's getting harder to do that. If you want people to be ready for the calls, you got to have, you can't make them sell tickets and run weekend things every single weekend.
All right, so, so candidly then, if you were to do the final draft on this report, you'd add in, of course, as Councilman Holloway recommended, the 911 evaluation and information. Would you also add in emergency services?
Such as?
And what other, and what other things would you add into this report to make it more equitable?
Well, I, I don't think it's that far off in, in what we have in the report. A comprehensive study would obviously be more accurate because it would look at some other things. For example, emergency management's input into the fire and EMS service. Sure. It would also, what Councilman Holloway came up with here would, would obviously be able to do that, if that's what you all wanted.
Of course. So just those two items?
That's, that's, that's two of them. There are some other.
There's some others.
Other issues. You know, how much should the city volunteer companies get? Should that be treated differently or not? And all the other social and political issues that this is going to stir up and has stirred up already. It's everywhere, it's not just here. So we understand that.
Can you, can you walk us through a little bit how the reimbursement, you know, for services would go in terms of billing and things like that? I mean, right now, let's say, you know, you live on the city limits, you're in the county and the city, you know, the paid service, you know, you have a, a fire call there or an emergency call there. So right now, you know, they can bill the insurance provider, is that correct?
A little more complicated. Right now, whichever unit handles the call is the billing agent, whether it may be the city, or if Fruitland, on a busy day, comes far into Hebron's area, Fruitland would do the billing because it's their unit. And, and they would, even with this, unless something was changed, they would continue to be able to do that. Our model's just talking about the city, in those times that they run into what their first due area that's within the county, that, as Wayne says, the doughnut hole here. That's all that we're, we've been asked to study when it comes, when it comes to this.
All right, so, so what would be reimbursement when the city goes into the, I mean, what would be charged that patient, that let's say wouldn't be charged someone in, you know, Mardella Springs from the Mardella Springs Fire Company, you know, out there?
Sure. One of the things to consider, Councilman, thank you, is that you can charge anything you want. It's being able to get reimbursed for it, is that. For example, a $900 charge for a complicated patient call, advanced life support call, may be very worthy. However, Medicare may say this is worth $498. If you're going to accept Medicare money, you can bill for 20% that co-pay, but you can't go after anything else. If the person has absolutely no insurance, is a cash customer, then you could go after that rack rate, I call it. It's like when you go to a hotel and you look in the doorway, behind the door and say, rack rate for this 240 a night, and you didn't pay anything near that. Well, that's, the rack rate is what's charged, but if the insurance companies will only give you 60% or whatever of it, it's a write-off. And you can't balance bill. You can't balance bill and keep your Medicare license or stay away from incarceration with that. So, so that's basically it. Most of the insurance companies are moving toward accepting the Medicare rates, and that's why we always advocate that never do your own billing, let a billing professional do it. Just too much risk involved. I'm sorry, it's too, it's that complicated, but it is that complicated.
You mentioned your scope of work. Who defined your scope of work?
The contract that we got was the, I believe was the consensus between county officials and city officials. Now, we, we also offered stages of the project, which if, if this council believes that it would be a worthwhile investment, and they're, they believe Tri-Data is the group that should do it, we would be, you know, honored to continue to do that. Or the, it gave, gave the county and the city the option to say, maybe we need to look in another direction.
Well, you'd, you'd mentioned twice in your report that this was a starting point. I mean, honestly, from what all the discussions that we had in any work sessions, and especially when we were looking at budgeting for this, this study, I thought this would be the great panacea to complete, to bring full circle, all the issues that were on the table. But this has left, I think, just as many questions out there as there were before.
Yes, and if you, if you remember back to the first time you allowed me to appear before you, and I appeared before every group, the first statement I made was, this will ask more questions than give you answers.
Well, that's good.
But what it will really do, in, in contrast to that, is if this is successful, if what you do is successful, it will set a, a pattern for the future, a cooperative pattern between county and city, between county volunteers, city career services, that will lay down expectations to the chief officers by the elected and appointed officials to, this is, we expect you to get this done. That's where I think the great advantage to this is. It really, and I think we've been quite candid with everybody, this is not a panacea to do, to do this. But we also understand, frankly, and one that can say, I don't expect, didn't expect you to make a massive investment in us before we could prove something to you.
We thought we did.
Yeah.
We thought we did. We really thought we did. Chief Hoppus came up with a report, I think, a very in-depth report on trying to evaluate the costs that the city incurred, and what he felt compensations were necessary. I felt that was a very thorough report. We were trying to, though, come up with something that we felt was more broad-based. And 90% of what is defining that area of a broad-based evaluation is the county's input, what, what skin we have in that, in that, in that game. And yet, this report. And yet, this report doesn't bring, similar to what Councilman Holloway said, this report doesn't reflect anything. I said, I think as far as what the county's efforts are towards these, addressing these costs. And that was, that was the great issue that we felt was left unanswered, that needed to be addressed.
If the data is, is made available to us, we have a final that we have to do. This was the draft. And I'd be happy to look at that, to see if it does make a difference.
I think that the county, I mean, I don't, I can't say, but I would, I would assume that the county would have all the, would have a, a good majority of the figures that you would need, at least for a starting point.
And I assume that in the beginning of the project, but found out a little bit different. And I, and I don't mean that as accusatory. I don't get upset over it because more places than not do not have the data. That's the, that's the usual for.
But I would've thought that before you took on the responsibility, you, I mean, because of the fact that you were the expert, you would have to at least give us some guidance, say, look, before I get started in this program, here's exactly what I need, because I've been to, you know, 300 counties across the country.
We did.
And here's what we find are shortfalls.
It's in our proposals.
And before I get started, I need to make sure that I have these calculations from all the different departments. And you're saying that you did that.
We did ask for it. And again, that I don't wanna to, I, I can't throw blame on anybody.
However you choose, that's okay. I don't mind.
I can't blame anybody because I'm used to what I'm, what I saw. It's, it's for, for somebody who doesn't do this all the time.
Right.
It, I would have the same questions, and I, I think that, that they're legitimate questions. However, the lack of, of data from everybody, and it doesn't matter whether you're a career volunteer, municipal or rural, it's, it's universal. Because in the past, Council President, I believe it was never expected of anybody as it is today, as the, as we, we've evolved in our practice of medicine outside the hospital, in going from the basic defendant, or defender of fire services and rescue services to getting more involved in prevention and, and community risk reduction. It's now being demanded, and that's a new phenomenon within the fire service.
Well, I'd like to offer some thank yous to all the folks that worked, worked on this, from the fire service, mayor, Mr. Culver's office, and everybody. But I do wanna say this, and, and we need to get this resolved. This is something that's been brewing for a long time. But we, we get audited. We do an audit. We pay a firm to do an audit every year. And my disappointment in this, and my first thought was, when I read this, is if our auditors came back to us and said, well, we did an audit, and we did the best we could with what we had, we'd be really disappointed. And I, maybe we didn't pay enough for what we got. I don't know. I don't know what the story is here. But it, it just doesn't look like it's a very thorough, thorough study to me. So, that's my feelings on it.
I, I mean, I was looking for something to the effect also, that, you know, you're talking about 20% of the calls that are made are with fire as opposed to EMS. And I was really anxious to see, okay, well, when these calls are made, you know, what's the percentage of volunteers that we know are going? What's the percentage of paid? What are those type of expenses? I was really looking for a real in-depth profile of what those true costs might be. You know, where are the equipment compensations necessary, whether it's gas, whether it's overhead, whether it's the vehicles, and then again, the ancillary services that are, that go with it. It seemed to me also, were you suggesting that with the EMS expenses, that what wasn't compensated, or what wasn't reimbursed, the debt that was left out there, were you suggesting that, that that would be something that the county would also be responsible for as well?
Well, that's, that was the, one of the main points of the study. And that is to come up with and determine what the gap was between what the city was getting and for the services they were providing into the county, and coming up with those numbers to make up that gap. That's what the, that's what the crux of the study was. And I think we, to the best of our ability, were able to provide that for you in the limited area of what we were, what we were assigned to do. And I, what I believe is that this will help you all get started with, with doing this, and get you moving in a direction from a level playing field.
I'm not quite sure where we go from here.
Well, that was my, I mean, my question, what, you know, so we have these recommendations, what are, what are the next steps? I mean, are we, you know, the county and, you know, the council and the executive, are we gonna meet and figure out which recommendations we agree on going forward with, that the city, I mean, you know, whereas, you know, the.
I'll tell you. I'll be honest, this is the first time that all the elected officials have been kept out of this. This had all been done between the people that were on that original team. So, you know, this is the first time I've heard the report also. I'm sure we'll all sit down, go over a work session, and also the city, and go from there and see if we can pick up something from here we can start from, or, or just where we go.
Yes, certainly. Could you use the microphone? Thanks.
Would you guys come up and have a seat?
If you wanna sit here, you're both, you're all welcome to sit here, sure.
Are we, are we talking prior to the final draft, or after the final draft?
Mayor?
Mr. President, Council. Two thoughts. You know, looking all the way back to when we started to have a conversation about the, at the time, soon-to-expire and now-expired fire service agreement, there were, there were a couple kind of variables that we talked about. And one of them, one of the variables was the, the basic data. And what we were going on at the time was something that was assembled by the city of Salisbury.
Sure.
And so, the hope was to get a, a third party in, you know, jointly funded, and that they could say, well, here are, here are our numbers, and, you know, it may be different from what the city of Salisbury had produced. But it would be something that we could all trust more. So, given that trust is in question.
Unbiased.
Right, unbiased. Yeah, and, and I mean, I, you know, I, I trust what the chief produces, of course.
I understand.
But we wanted to make sure that, you know.
The accuracy.
We removed that question of, well, those are the city's numbers versus. So, so we've still got that question of trust, I think, on the table, you know, given some questions that came up today. That being said, there's, there's one other thing that I wanna address, just going back to the 911 center and, and other services provided. You know, Maryland is not set up like Virginia. You know, our municipalities are not independent entities within counties. So, the question of whether or not that is a service provided to the business of the city government of Salisbury is, I think, answered. There is no service provided by the 911s unless, you know, a call goes out from the mayor's office saying, hey, I need, you know, I call 911 from up here. That is not, so Wycomico County citizens that live inside the city limits of Salisbury or businesses located in the city limits of Salisbury pay for that service. And they pay county taxes, and they pay exactly the same county taxes as somebody outside of the, the city limits pays. So, I think to, to include that, you know, that muddies the water because that's a level playing field, no matter whether you live in a municipality or not. But outside of, outside of that, there's an additional service that the members of the corporation of the city of Salisbury have agreed to provide for each other, and that's a paid fire service. However, the issue that we've got here is, it's, it's going to people who are not paying those membership dues, city taxes. And that's, that's the issue. That's the inequity that I think has to be addressed. You know, so, so whatever is provided inside and out of, you know, as a blanket service from the county, through county taxes, is one thing. But then the things that are on top of that, you know, that's where we've gotten the inequity.
Well, that could be, but I mean, that include, that decides on what, I mean, because we have two arguments, really, arguments, two challenges between the city and the county. And that's not only fire service agreement, that's tax differential. And, yes, and both of them have to be addressed. And so, where do you apply the, where do you apply the call center? Do you apply that to the fire service agreement, or are you gonna apply that towards whatever facts and figures get implemented into, into the tax differential? Because it should all probably dovetail at one point in time.
I think as long as, as long as the county operates 911 services, that 911 center, and no municipalities manage their own, then I assume county taxes are paying for that. And that would be something that would be provided across the board. And so, in an evaluation of tax differential, you'd say, well, everybody gets that, so there's no differential for that.
But the point, one point is, is, I understand what you're saying, but there's 70,000 people that live outside of Salisbury. And there's 30, 30,000 that live inside. So, there is a differential in the amount of taxes that are paid. And that would be a figure that would have to be come up with. If you're gonna look at the 911 center as being of value in this formula that we're using.
Right. But, but again, the, every single individual, and that's really what, what it comes down to, is paying the same rate.
That's true.
Whether they're inside or outside, to, to get that protection of their property by dialing 911 and getting somebody to answer the phone.
Do we comment, Spoh?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm just still where I was. We, we had to go a lot further yet, so. But I, I agree. I think, I think we're confusing fire service and tax differential, which I'd like to keep those things.
Well, I think so too. It's, I think.
I, I don't understand the data part not being there. I'm gonna find out more about that information. And like I say, I, I read the report. I guess what troubles me is just the fact that you took what the gross costs were and just divided by the number of calls. And I could've had an accountant down in finance do that. I, I'm looking, like John and Joe, for something, you know, aimed towards this rather than just division of, of the total cost.
Yeah, Executive Culver, if that's what we did, yes, I would agree that you should be disappointed. But when you look at the number of calls, we had to differentiate levels of calls, we had to differentiate mileage of transportation, we had to differentiate the extent of the service provided, whether there was transport or there wasn't transport. And I think if, if you look into the report, we've even mentioned once or twice that it's not as easy as dividing the number of call, doing a simple mathematical accounting.
I'm sure there was.
Same thing with all the issues with response times.
I'm just wondering what's in there. I can, I highlight it, and I can show it to you where it says just that.
And, and the other, the issue with response times and interval data and things like that, you just can't add pieces together. It doesn't give you the accurate results. It is very complicated.
We're talking dollars and not response times. Now, I understand there's two different things.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the whole thing. I, I wanna assure you that we did more than division.
Well, like I said, we, we've got a lot of work to do, and I know Jake and the mayor and the council's willing to sit down, and we're willing to go from there and see where we are.
Mr. Mayor? And I think, just two closing thoughts, and then I've gotta run. But one, I think, moving forward, we certainly wanna meet in whatever forum or setting is appropriate, whether that's the councils together and, and the executives together. You know, we're open to whatever process you wanna move forward with. Secondly, I just wanna also add on the data, there was a point in time during the process when we were asked the question about more financial information. And I remember having a conversation with Keith Corddry, our finance director, okay, let's make sure we get everything and give them everything. And the response that I got was, was we've given them everything. Our auditors have given up everything. We've given over everything. All that there is. I don't, you know, receipts, you know, what, you name it. And, and I, I don't know what more there is to give. I don't know what each fired station would have to give. I don't, I don't know what they keep on hand, but I would expect that they would have detailed records, detailed records, and would be able to produce them.
And on the other side, I would think as far as your group is concerned, you know, you, you would have made a statement to the effect of, you know, on October 13th, made a request for this information, none came in. You know, some type of even a chronological order of efforts that were made and, and refuted, yet you could not do your job or couldn't finish the project.
Yes, thank you. Perhaps one of the things that, that we saw was, as true as, as what you're saying was, for us to just continue to introduce conflict and accusations, et cetera, I, I would say I would rather people be upset with me and Tri-Data, but move this process forward because I, I could come, this wasn't a forensic audit. We were never asked to do that, but I, I just thought it would, we all thought, if Tri-Data looked at this and said it was so important, that the wagons needed to be pointed in one direction and everybody moving, no matter how fast or slow, and for me, to come up and accuse people or, or to look like we're accusing people, I think we would've done more harm than good.
I would disagree with you. We're all professionals here. And, and I think, you know, if you, if you went to the executive and said, you know, Bob, I'm having trouble getting the data I need here, I would assume you'd have it as soon as possible. At least you'd have a really good excuse, reason as to why not. Right.
And some of it doesn't. And the other part of it is, and, and I consulted with Wayne, he's been very good on this to me, but is we had to make a decision, we've been going at this for a while, what do I do? Move forward was the answer, whether good news or bad news. But I, I, that's where we were. This, this wasn't a forensic audit. We are all professionals, but we know the volunteer corporations, they don't have to do anything for me. And we didn't, we try not to start newspaper battles and things that you all, you don't need us to start those. And I think in, in moving, in moving forward, that's, we wanted to come out of this with not only a report and things, but solutions to move forward. And I think you have some. I think you have some. And I think that you all will really move forward if you can get past those first couple of things is to move.
Maybe the mayor can ask this, or somebody in the audience. How far off was Chief Hoppus's reimbursement recommendations compared to this one?
That is a good question.
Do you know, John?
No, I don't. Well, if you add the, the two figures you have up here, 1.0, I think 1,29,000 or something. Originally, when it started, Chief came to us with 2.2, is what they felt. So, it's about a million.
Well, and one, and one of the things that, that, that we made the decision on was some of, while Chief, Chief Hoppus's work was good, no question about it. But if you, if you look at things like payment for fire stations, payment for other types of services that may or may not be used versus the exact services that you're getting, our opinion was to go in this direction. I, I'm sure the mayor, which he, would be fine if you wanted to accept.
No, I, I think that's fair. You know, because again, the members of that municipal corporation have said, we want this level of service, and we're gonna pay for it. And city taxes pay for that. So, I think that's a reasonable thing to, to say. We removed that from the equation. I understand.
And that's what we did. So.
I, I just wanna say thank you to the county as well, council and executive. This is further along in the discussion process than we've been since 2014, when the agreement expired. So, I just wanna say thank you.
Well, I wanna, I've said before, I wanna, I do wanna get it resolved. I'm gonna get, I wanna get it cleared up. If the county, you know, if it's, the county's responding, if the county is gonna be responsible for making payments, I, I wouldn't shy away from that. I mean, you, you pay what you owe. If, if, you know, their service is being delivered, and the compensation isn't good enough with where we are right now, you know, the, the compensation method that we're using now is years old. And you're right, we haven't reevaluated, and it has to be. And if there's services there that we owe for, I know the executive, and I think the members of this council feel that these, these, this should be paid. And I just would really like to know what the real science is and how we can get to that exact number.
And, and sir, you're, I, I can't agree more. And what we have, what we have suggested about vesting the responsibility in the chiefs, the people who are running the organization, not just operationally, but being the stewards, the more that they can get together and come up with standards and guidelines, not only, doesn't only help in response and taking care of people, but it will better target how much should we be reimbursed. And as the mayor quite candidly said, is right now, this is just a general start. If six months down the road, the chiefs say, all right, for this type of emergency, we're going, this is the unit we need with this staffing. If the city wants to send more, that's an operational decision. The stewardship decision is, this is what you're gonna get reimbursed because we've all agreed to it. And that's why this whole cooperative effort is so important to getting where, where, where you're trying to lead the county to, sir.
In the end, our citizens are the ones that we have to look out for. So.
John, Mark?
Okay.
Joe?
I'm done.
Dr. Cohen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chicken, chicken, are people still wearing it? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Entertained motion to adjourn the open work session, so we can go to a closed session. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, means adjourn. At this time, we will go into a close, to address personnel issues.